This evening, we have the privilege of reading a proclamation to the Friends of the Library. Or any of the members from the library here today, great. I see you now. I was looking a little earlier. So allow me to read this proclamation and we'll present it to you at the end of the reading. This is a proclamation designating October fifteenth through twenty-one of two thousand two hundred and twenty-three as Friends of Library Week in Glen County. Whereas Friends of the Brunswick Glen Library have been part of the community for over fifty years, raising money that enables our library to more, to move more good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. And whereas the work of the Friends highlights on an ongoing basis the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present. And whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and to advocate to ensure that our libraries get the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services. And whereas the Friends' gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism lead to a positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Glen County Board of Commissioners that October fifteen through twenty-one of two thousand twenty-three as Friends of Library Week in Glen County, Georgia, and urges everyone to join the Friends of the Library and thank them for all they do to make our library and community so much better. In witness thereof, I set my hand this day, the fifth day of October, two thousand twenty-three. Thank you, and would y'all come forward? Mr. Chairman, move to approve the consent agenda for general business with the exception of anything any commissioner wishes to pull.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve the consent agenda. Are there any items that any commissioner wishes to pull? All right, seeing none, we'll attach the whole list. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Moves us to item number thirteen, which is a public hearing for land use. Public hearings will be limited to thirty minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present the group's position in the time allocated, and your cooperation in this is greatly appreciated. Item number thirteen is ZM five-five-five-eight Sea Island Team Member Housing Rezone. Consider a request for an amendment to the Old Stables Plan Development District to clarify that four habitable floors within a four-story workforce housing development are allowed within the Plan Development District PD. The property is Zoned PD ZM one-seven-five-four and located at six fifty-one Sea Island Road, St. Simons Island Parcel zero-four dash one-five-zero-zero-seven. Chris Jordan, Hunter McLean, Agents for SIAC LLC, owner and applicant. And Ms. Leaf, if you will, take it from here, please.
Good evening, Commissioner Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. So this application before you this evening is to amend the Plan Development Text for the Old Stables PD, or the Old Stables Tract Plan Development District. And it would be to allow four habitable floors in a building. Currently, the PD text does allow a forty-five-foot-high building, and the code allows four stories. But there is a section of the zoning ordinance that does state that only three can be habitable. So the request before you is to allow each of those four stories to have living space to be habitable. So the applicant is interested in doing a multifamily development for their workforce at Sea Island Resort. And they did receive site plan approval from the Island's Planning Commission in January this year for a four-story eighty-four-unit multifamily development. And as I mentioned, the PD text does allow the forty-five-foot-high building, and it does not specifically have any information about habitable floors. So the applicant is seeking to clarify this and to enable the project that they would like to do to go forward. Glen County Zoning Ordinance Section five-oh-two states that on St. Simons Island, no more than three stories shall be habitable. So those are the codes pertaining to this property. So here is the property off of Coquina Circle, which accesses onto Sea Island Road. And this is their proposed amendment language. That's also in your packet. And this only applies to this particular parcel. This would not be the entirety of the Plan Development District. The district does run from the adjacent employee housing uniform facility, as well as it does run up to Frederica, the intersection of Frederica and Sea Island, and the retail commercial businesses that are there. So this would just be for this parcel. And as this exhibit shows, within this circle of Coquina Circle, this is the area to be rezoned. So this is the only location. And their approved site plan from January did show this as their proposed site. In school, there is a large open area that they would have as a courtyard. Their primary entrance would be off of Coquina Circle. There is no parking on this site. There would be parking adjacent within an existing employee parking lot that does have adequate spaces. If they end up doing eighty-four units, there would be a hundred and sixty-eight parking spaces that would be required for that, and that can all be contained within that existing employee parking lot. So this is the full site plan. It's a show, the entirety of it. And then this is also from their site plan approval package. This is the conceptual elevation. So at site plan stage, we do not look at architectural plans. We do not look at floor plans. The Planning Commission is only required to see a conceptual elevation, and it can definitely change throughout the course of their design. So the applicant did submit yesterday some more detailed conceptual renderings, and I wanted to include those in the packet for you. So this has a little bit more on their landscaping plan. So this does show their team member housing development with the trees and the landscaping that they propose. So along this kind of rear side, they are proposing a landscape wall and heavily landscaped that would be between their courtyard and the building. And then here's another view, just showing. So view A is from this location, which is the top vantage point. View B is in this location, and this is the bottom vantage point of what someone standing in those locations would see. And this is what their planned proposal is for a number of different concepts for the unit. So they are proposing majority four-bedroom units, some three-bedroom, and some one-bedroom units. And then here's a little more detail for their elevations and conceptual design. And then these were the comments that were submitted prior to the IPC meeting. And I know the Board of Commissioners received many more between IPC and this meeting that have been sent to you. So the Island's Planning Commission did consider this on September nineteenth, and they did unanimously vote to recommend approval of it. It was a six-oh vote with one commissioner absent that night. And these are your possible motions this evening. And Mr. Scott Silin is here from Sea Island Company, as well as his team. So I'm happy to answer any questions at this point, or if you'd like to turn it over to the applicant for their presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Leaf. Ministers, do we have any questions before we open the public hearing?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. This is a public hearing, and as I stated earlier, there will be thirty minutes for each side. Any that wish to come up and speak in opposition to ZM five-five-five-eight, please come forward and state your name for the record, please. You'll have five minutes.
My name is Hugh Bork. I'm a resident of St. Simons Island. Gentlemen, I need to pose a question to you folks as a commission, to you, Mr. Fallon, as an employee at the county. Do you listen to yourselves very often? If this proposal is approved, it will set a precedent.
Could you speak up a little bit, or get closer to the mic?
If this proposal is approved, it will set a precedent on the island. I remind you, less than thirty days ago, this council or this board denied a tax appeal for an individual because you didn't want to set a precedent in that particular case. There's very little in common between the two, except this is a precedent-setting decision. You do it. There's nothing to keep anybody else from coming back in and saying, hey, did it for Sea Island, why can't you do it for me? And I'm asking for a simple first-floor restroom in my home and was denied based on these requirements. So I've lived and felt this one, all right? Now, take a look at drainage. I understand, don't have all the details, didn't study this in detail, but correspondence I've been privy to, the stormwater was waived and not presented as part of the IPC presentation in this application. I got to ask, why not? Why, if there's a requirement in the covenants, we didn't require that of the applicant? I'll take you to the Taylor House storm drainage. It was done two years ago, three years ago. Flooding area along Frederica, just north of the Sea Island Road. To the credit of Public Works, they spent ninety to a hundred thousand bucks. I don't know exactly what it was. It was a moderate cost to try to correct that. I spoke against that one because, not that we didn't need the correction done, but because the calculations for that stormwater correction assumed the inlet and assumed the outflow could handle what was going on when the silo look at the engineering that was done for that project. Now, by inspection, it's better, but it's not okay. It still did not fix the problem as was promised by the Public Works Department. Now, this part that I'm bringing about, Taylor House, flows in. It's the inlet to part of the stormwater we're dealing with here, guys. My point is that if you keep piling the stuff on and do a half-assed job of doing the engineering, meaning looking at it in a silo, you're creating problems. Two more items I'd like to stress. Parking was not part of it, and I've listened to the language from the Planning Department on a number of occasions where, oh yeah, don't worry about it, the adjacent parking is okay. Well, nobody has done, to my knowledge, has done a reconciliation to say, is the summation of the Sea Island employees that park there day and night in the Sea Island parking lot, this development and other uses around this, does the sum of those parts provide adequate parking? If you look at this development, yeah, there's probably a hundred and sixty spots out there. But when it's compiled with the rest of the shared parking, nobody has, I don't know of, has gone through and done the analysis, say, is that okay? You did it at, with Thrive, and I guess it's Vitality now, and you crammed all of that with Vitality, Frederica House, the new drugstore there, the convenience market, and the overflow parking from the development at Brogan's North. There is not adequate parking for the same mentality that Ms. Leaf just talked about here. Well, we got enough, don't worry about it. But the parking plan was not submitted as part of the application. Gentlemen, I'm tired of you guys accepting an incomplete application. The last time I spoke to this body was about an incomplete application. I raised some specific issues, sent it in for some response. Crickets. Not a damn word came back as to what was done, and I was promised that.
Keep your language acceptable, please.
I think you understand that I'm a little upset.
I understand that.
I will do my best, Commissioner, reclaim my time, all right? There's a list of numerous activities or items that were not done in accordance with the ordinance as part of the application. Why does it keep going? Nobody asked the question. Nobody fixes it. And you continue to accept inadequate and incomplete applications. So my suggestion is you take the criticism that you've received, not just from me, but from other constituents here in this room, and defer this decision at least until those answers are responded to. To take them in and say, yeah, we're going to look at it, it's okay, that doesn't cut it, gentlemen. Mr. Clark, okay? Mr. Rofalski? I vote for you guys. I voted for both of you guys, you twice, okay? You twice. Okay? It's in jeopardy going forward here. Gentlemen, please do your job.
Anyone else that wishes to come forward and speak? State your name for the record, please, and you'll have five minutes.
I'm sorry?
State your name for the record, please, and you'll have five minutes.
Sure, yeah. Good afternoon, uh, gentlemen, ma'am. My name is Jim Frashe. I live on St. Simon's Island. Um, because of my involvement in a previous petition, uh, regarding the widening of Sea Island Road, I was approached by some of those petitioners and asked to develop a petition regarding this particular project, which is what I did. Um, I'd like to just read you that petition and, uh, tell you basically how, at this point, somewhere around eight-hundred-and-seventy people feel about the project. This is the Coquina Circle petition of the Glen County Board of Commissioners. I am registered to vote and/or pay property taxes in Glen County, Georgia, per my signature below. I'm deeply concerned about the proposed housing project at Coquina Circle, St. Simon's Island, Georgia, and want to register my strongest possible protest against it. Approval of this project will set a bad precedent for invading and abusing our wetlands, as is prohibited by law, violating existing building height and use restrictions per existing building ordinances and code, and allowing inappropriate worker housing next to a K-thru-eight junior school, which defies common sense. I urge the Glen County Board of Commissioners to deny this project application to build worker housing at this location, and I consent to the use of my electronic signature for this petition. So that petition, uh, has been signed by over eight-hundred people in about nine days, and, uh, I would encourage you to please, uh, listen to the people who have spent a lot of time looking at the project and trying to understand what it really means to the community and what other alternatives there may be. Thank you very much for your attention.
Please state your name for the record, please. You have five minutes.
Uh, my name is Roland Daniel, and I live on St. Simon's Island. I've, uh, been a resident here since seventy-eight and a property owner since seventy-nine. Um, this, uh, issue is really not about wetlands, though it is. It's not about drainage, though it is. It is not about who or who is submitting the application or what they want. Uh, it doesn't matter if it's Sea Island or if it's individual Joe off the street, it's the same thing. I know most of you. I've played basketball with some of you. I have had meals with some of you. I have, um, spoken with most of you at one time or another. I know people who have bought the houses that you've built. I know folks who have taken rides on your boats, and all of those folks are people who voted you to be up here to do the will of the people. The will of a vast majority of the people that I suspect would be against what we're here about tonight. That, I am very saddened that Island Planning Commission, um, six-oh vote, ridiculous to me, but that's not the point. The point is, is that they make a recommendation to you, for whatever reason they do. What is the point is that we have a zoning ordinance that I have written about in the past on more than one occasion, saying that if we would just enforce the ordinance that we have, that we might not need to rewrite an ordinance. We might not need to be up here with a hundred or so citizens fighting to save St. Simon's Island. Now, those of you who are not on St. Simon's or the parts of the county, most of you are very familiar with St. Simon's. You recreate here, you eat here, you spend money here. Um, I, I, I just think that there can't be any other answer to this, except that you deny this permit. It is of absolutely no consequence in a positive way to... This weekend, uh, because this deadline, uh, this meeting is, uh, after my deadline for the rapport that you'll see in the paper this weekend, I wrote a very quick bulletin, and I want to read that to you. By the time you read this, our county commission will have voted on whether to allow four floors of living quarters in a building in conflict with our zoning ordinance. If allowed, this island is headed in the direction of Hilton Head in coastal Florida. It turn, it, it turns, it, if turned down, thus holding the line on residential floors, thus preserving the ceiling-on-density on St. Simon's Island as well as the integrity of our zoning laws, the decision will mean that we're moving into the future, having a commitment to a continued pleasant quality of life. It matters not who asks for more than they deserve, it only matters that we keep true to a vision that brought us here in the first place. Unfortunately, my deadline occurs before this monumental, pivotal meeting. This is a crossroads. This is the crossroads. So I don't know the outcome yet, but I'm concerned, and if the outcome suits you, then applaud this commission for listening to the people. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record, please, and you'll have five minutes.
Amy Abbott. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on the Sea Island PD revision. Sea Island's main argument that they cannot build out horizontally to accommodate the eighty-four units is that they want to do a bang-up landscaping job. Actions speak louder than words. I have driven around Coquina Circle to see St. Simon's Christian School and the other Sea Island employee buildings, a wardrobe building, a employee administration building, transportation hub, and a parking lot. I hope everybody here has taken the time to drive around Coquina Circle. I saw zero landscaping. That, to even critique whether it was bang-up, what I saw was an industrial staging area with metal fencing surrounding the parking lot and transportation hub. In the parking lot, there were few spaces for overflow parking for the new employee housing development. There's no parking. Words that Sea Island has used are intend and promise, no promises. They said intend and no promises repeatedly. There is no promise, promises that Sea Island is not going to build additional employee housing on parcel C. The argument for bang-up landscaping is empty. The audience here tonight is not an angry mob or keyboard warriors. They are the citizens of Glen County who care deeply about preserving the historic beauty and charm of St. Simon's Island. We want you to deny the PD text revision.
State your name for the record, please, and you'll have five minutes.
Jeff Kilgore. As all of you know, um, from the email I sent out, uh, earlier, this application never should have been before the Island Planning Commission, nor should we be here tonight. I've written to you regarding the subject, uh, you know as well as I do that six nineteen, section six nineteen was not complied with at the site plan in January. But tonight I want to talk about the amendment. Uh, there's a general belief or acceptance that the holder of a PD text can do whatever they wish, subject to your approval, of course. Here's what Will Worley said at the IPC meeting on September the nineteenth, a couple weeks ago. So the section seven-twenty-three of the zoning ordinance created the PD process, which is an avenue for private... for a piece of property. So this amendment would be, in addition to those exceptions that are already written into the PD text, that's commonplace. I think PD texts do that. They say the zoning ordinance will apply as it exists now, with these following exceptions, and they write their own rules. So that is contemplated by our ordinance. I've got a lot of difficulty with that statement with all respect to Counselor Worley. The, uh, PD text, indeed, it is section seven-twenty-three, and it's strongly recommending and encourages the developer to be very broad, very, um, circumspect, very, uh, detailed with all of the potential uses, and to make the PD text what they want it to be at inception. Section seven-twenty-three dot-two says that once the PD district has been created, all further development shall conform to the standards adopted for the district. Section seven-twenty-three dot-two also says no building permit shall be issued for these PD districts until a site plan conforming to the requirements set forth in subsection six nineteen entitled Site Plan Approval has been submitted and approved by the Planning Commission. So clearly, section seven-twenty-three is not superior if such, they have to comply with section six nineteen in the first instance. In January this year, site plan was presented to the Island Planning Commission, unfortunately, and, uh, it included the plan for a four-story building. It did not, however, provide any information regarding an occupation of the various floors. In fact, the PD text itself does not contain any guidance as to the occupancy of a four-story building. Now, Mr. Stylen will tell you that the site plan clearly indicated four habitable floors. Well, let's just call that a prevarication, since in the South, we don't like to call people names, but in fact, if you go to the PD text itself, it clearly says, quote, "The overall density of PD district shall not exceed one-hundred residential units." But it never mentions the number of floors or occupancy. In summary, everything that was done, uh, up to, uh, I don't know, month, two months ago, whenever it was, somebody at the eleventh hour said, oh, my goodness, we need four habitable floors, so let's go ask them to waive the Glen County Ordinance, section five-oh-two. Now, the folks that came along before you created this ordinance, and they thought they had a pretty good reason. And if you tonight approve this amendment, you will, in effect, repeal section five-oh-two because it will no longer be enforceable. Now, Mr. Stylen threatens to build more buildings, but you don't need to worry, really worry about that because, um, the site's already at fifty-three percent coverage. The PD text itself limits it to sixty percent. But the real travesty of all of this is the taxpayers of Glen County have spent something over a million dollars curing the drainage problems created by this PD text. Now, if you go to page twenty-four of the PD text, it says that the developer will be responsible for all drainage issues. Well, the Sylvan Road Taylor House debacle in October of twenty-two came from this site. And the equipment that's out there right now, and the design plan, was paid for by the taxpayers of Glen County to the tune of ninety thousand dollars for G W E S to design the plan, and the equipment that's out there, and the people, our Glen County employees.
You're, you're at five and a half. Anyone else that wishes to come up and speak in opposition of ZM five-five-five-eight? Please come forward, state your name for the record, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Jane Fraser, and I want to continue down that same road. Uh, the use of ARPA funds, COVID money, uh, for stormwater improvements in violation of the PD text, and also in violation of federal law. Mr. Fallon came from federal law enforcement, so I'm wondering how this happens. How is it that the taxpayers in this room are paying the infrastructure for the Sea Island Company? The drainage report submitted by Sea Island grossly violates the county's stormwater ordinance. The development violates the county's floodplain ordinance. The proposed amendment represents a considerable modification, and I realize I'm not the first to say that, but Parcells A and B will also be greatly affected. But I think that the, the most shocking is that citizens are paying for infrastructure for a company that in its own PD text on page twenty-four says, we will pay all the drainage. I was here in two thousand nine. I was here when that was voted, twenty-ten, I was here. And the only reason that this was allowed was because of those concessions made by the Sea Island Company, that they would pay all the infrastructure, and it's you, gentlemen, who have not held them to their word. And of course, not being held to their word, they're not held to their word, but it's in their PD text that they will pay for all the drainage, and yet it's the people in this room, the taxpayers in this room, the taxpayers of America with ARPA funds misused. Thank you. We hope you deny this.
I live on St. Simon's Island. I was the first person to speak against the site plan application at the January meeting of the Island Planning Commission. Uh, I was followed by Mr. Kilgore and Mrs. Fraser. I was very disappointed that that meeting was poorly attended, uh, but now we have reason to thank Mr. Stylen and others from Sea Island for asking for this, uh, approval of an amendment, uh, to what they plan to do. And I think the reason they're doing this is to be absolutely certain that they establish a precedent, as Mr. Bork suggested, uh, so that they will find other things that they can develop or redevelop, tear down existing things, et cetera. So we should be grateful, uh, to the Sea Island folks, the, the company, not the people who live there, and I, I feel sorry for the people who live there. They have lost their post office. They have to come to St. Simon's to get their mail. They have seen more and more and more tourists, uh, uh, coming to the island, to Sea Island, more and more workers, uh, or team members, as they're called. So Mr. Stylen and his cohorts have finally awakened the public. This is not as large a crowd as, uh, showed up at the meeting, at the last meeting of the IPC. I, I'm glad to see these people here, and I wonder how many are standing out, uh, there. Waking up to what a crappy, crummy job is being done, uh, by the folks you have selected and appointed to your Mainland and Island Planning Commission. Uh, I think the kind of thing we're seeing now with this, uh, plan to build this guest housing, this, uh, workforce housing in the middle of a wetland, which is now a huge mess, that's a real wake-up call. And I think the citizens on St. Simon's and Sea Island should now start demanding the right to elect their own planning commissioners, to take it out of your hands. And I know you don't want to see that happen because, uh, once you allow folks on St. Simon's to elect their planning commissioners, next thing you know, they're going to want to, uh, incorporate St. Simon's to protect themselves, uh, and to give Brunswick, a sister city, to fight against some of the things that you're wasting your time and our tax dollars on. Finally, I want to thank Mr. Stylen for his letter, his two-page letter with all the pretty pictures attached that he sent on October second to... pretty pictures attached that he sent on October 2nd to the headmaster at the St. Simon's Christian School. If you will read the second full paragraph, the second paragraph on page two, you will see the not-so-glove threat that if we're not allowed to have four stories of habitation for our guest workers, we're going to have to build more buildings. And because of the economics of doing that, putting a second or even a third building at Coquena Circle, we'll end up housing more people. And you know what's going to happen. If it turns out that there are problems with having these workers live there, or if workers don't want to live there, don't want to live with others, if there are problems, cultural problems, social problems, police problems, you know what's going to happen. Sea Island is going to want to turn these into condos. So it's going to be very hard for you to say no to allowing this amendment. But I think it would be wise for you to do so and to show some strength in your willingness to protect the public from the people who bought up a bankrupt island.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Hello, my name is Sue Cannelli, and I live here on St. Simon's Island. I agree with everything that everyone has said before me, and I just want to reiterate a few questions for all of you right now. First, is setting a precedent for these four-story buildings. This one goes and it's horse out the gate down the road. It'll never stop, and it'll change the island forever. I don't want to see that happen. Flood encroachment will affect that area. I've seen the pipes that are put down there, and they're as high as the bottom of the balcony, the pipes. Where's the water going from these pipes in that area that you need a pipe that big? It's going to affect something. Also, I don't want to see our insurance rating lowered because of flooding. And there has been flooding just in small places like on. Wouldn't believe. That's on a small scale. I'm looking at a big scale on these four-story buildings. How many parking spaces that was asked for before? If even there are 100 extra parking spaces, trying to get those cars out of that area in that tiny crossway by Harris Teeter, you're going to have accidents, you're going to have impatient people, you're going to have all kinds of things. Impact, 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 and precedent is why I'm up here. The impact is too huge. It's too big. And also, impact on infrastructure, the water and sewer, who does pay for that? I mean, they could put the pipes out to a certain point, but we pick up after that. And if anything goes wrong, it's the town, it's us, that pays for it, even though Sea Island said they would. How far do they pay for? And where does it get picked up on taxpayers? And also, is Sea Island getting paid for all the people they're bringing in by wage matching? I'd be curious about that. I hear between 300 and 600 people are coming, and it's been written up in different papers that way. Do you have a future expansion of this current four-story plan on adjoining property for future use? I've seen a map that says that they do. So again, precedent, they do it once. Is it going to happen in three different sections that they own there, Sea Island owns? And a tree screen is not as effective as other things to shelter the children from building, the building residential onlookers. That's a big fear for all the parents that send their children there. It's also a fear for anyone who loves children. I would say pause, take a pause, really look at the impact on the infrastructure, the impact on the children, the impact on the taxpayers, and please, don't let this go through again because of that one word, precedent, because you won't be able to stop the other people in line waiting for this to happen. Thank you.
Anyone else wishes to come up and speak in opposition to ZM 5558? State your name for the record, please, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Gary Cook, 2110 Claremont Lane, City of Brunswick, Georgia. I just want to say that, you know, I think that each commissioner should actually, you know, applaud the residents for St. Simon's Island. I know I would, of course, and I don't live there, and I really don't want to live there because of the traffic and everything else. But I do remember, maybe not this commission, but the past commission always fought hard for green space and things like that on the island. Of course, you've always been pretty lenient with Sea Island on, you know, purchasing property from them. Of course, they pay you back. But in this case, I heard a lot about the drainage and, you know, the study wasn't done, I wasn't turned in. Being in the city, you know, and during storm times, St. Simon's having a lot of flooding, trying to get on and off of the city of Brunswick hazard. But what I'm looking at is, nobody's mentioning it, and I keep looking up there and I don't see it, and it's right adjacent to it is the Goode Cemetery. The problem is, when you deal with a lot of flooding, and they said it, where is this water going? You know, you have a study been done in 1997 that shows that a building that's adjacent to the Goode is right there, that has some grave sites up under it, there's some grave sites up under the parking lot. So what I'm saying is, when in fact that, you know, you're going to sit here and respect not only these citizens that's living and speaking and paying the taxes who actually built St. Simon's and Sea Island for you to be here, respect the ones that's gone. You know, my family's from Savlo and St. Simon. You know, so it may be some of them up under this slab, but what I'm saying is, where is this water going? Why is these studies not done properly? And why is things just being able to come up before you? What do people actually think about? Who actually hold the gavel here? But I think that each of you commissioners, you know, Commissioner Swett, Fendig, Raffowski, Nia, Tosinum, Booker, and Clark, and, you know, Fallon, you know, I think y'all have all that gavel as one, and I think it's just really time. And I'm just actually glad you just denied this and really think about these cemetery and where is this water going? What really will happen to these, you know, grave sites and these family members who are already in pain for some things that's already, they can't get the sites from up under the building and from up under the parking lot. Thank you.
That is the 30 minutes allowed for opposition. If there is one other that would like to come up and speak in opposition, we'll allow that. Anyone else that wants to come up, we'll take one more person. Looks like you timed it pretty good then, so thank you for that. At this time, those that wish to speak in favor of ZM 5558, please come forward, state your name for the record, please. And you'll have five minutes.
I'm Bill McHugh for Sea Island. I yield my time to Scott Styland.
Good evening. I'm Scott Styland, president and CEO of Sea Island Company. And I'd like to just go through some points to make sure that everybody kind of understands where we're coming from. And I'll address some of the comments that have been made from the opposition as well. So I want to start with why we're here. Workforce housing is a significant need for Sea Island Company, for our industry, and for local businesses that are here. 20-plus years ago, this company had the foresight to think about that, and they created a support campus on this site. In fact, the first PD that was approved was back in 2003. This site is located adjacent to our team member parking lot. It is adjacent to our wardrobe building and our shuttle stop. And it is probably the most convenient site that one could think about in terms of how you cite workforce housing. The building is going to be occupied primarily by our seasonal team members, who will consist of international workers who are here on an approved visa for various lengths of time, college students who are employed during the summer or taking a semester off, workers who actually come and work winter and summer seasons at different resorts, and also new team members who are new to the area and coming to look for a place to live. And then it'll be interim housing for those folks. This really is a project that takes cars off the road, and I'll talk about that more in a minute. The original PD text, as I said, was approved in 2003. That was prior to the change in the zoning. We still believe that we have, we're not limited by the four habitable floors, but as has been pointed out by Mr. Smith and others, we are here to clarify, to clarify that, and that is what our PD ask is. 45 feet has always been a constant from the beginning. The 45-foot building height has always been a constant. The IPC unanimously approved the site plan in January and unanimously approved the PD amendment last month. Am I allowed, Stephanie, can I go back one? Okay. Thank you. This is what our building looks like. This is the building we intend to build. I'll get to the next slide in a moment. This building contains 83 units that will comprise 319 beds. It's situated on the south portion of the property. In case anyone needs the orientation, the school, I don't know where the arrow is, but the school is at the top of the screen. And after that, we met with the school to talk about what concerns they had and what changes they'd like to see to the site plan as we go forward. They made mention of moving sidewalks, creating a buffer, and being, doing a number of other things to kind of keep all of our access to the property on the southern side of the property. We've done that. We are also adding, as Ms. Leaf said in her comments, a masonry wall, and we're landscaping with oak trees on the outside, on the school side of the masonry wall, palm trees on the inside of the masonry wall, plus all the landscape that you see in this illustrative rendering here. We've also offered, to the right of where the school's parking lot is, is their kind of playfield and soccer field. We've offered to add some additional trees to kind of screen and buffer their area for the school, and if they want to take us up on that offer, we'll be happy to do that. Our intent is to create a courtyard for our team to enjoy and a visual buffer to create some distance from the school. Every time we've been thinking about this site plan, we've been thinking about the school as our neighbor. They are our only neighbor in this particular plan. We've worked with the county to relocate the existing drainage easement to move it to the north side of the property. And yes, as somebody mentioned, those are 42-inch pipes that are going to go in to help provide adequate drainage for the parcel, for our neighbor, and any potential expansion our neighbor would elect to try to pursue, and will ultimately tie into the project that the county is working on to the north in the neighborhood to the north. The question before all of you is, do we go with four habitable floors or not? From Sea Island's perspective, we're going to build to the 45-foot height level. So the ground floor is either going to be residences or it's going to be storage. If we are unable to build four habitable floors, as was pointed out, we have additional existing right to build more units. The only way to build more units is to push into the open space that we had created and create additional buildings. Those buildings would also be 45 feet high. I'd like to point out that this site plan was something we literally just put together a week ago because we've never considered doing anything but four habitable floors in this project. Our plan, as somebody mentioned earlier, it maximizes the density vertically. It goes to our existing height limit that we're allowed to build to, and it provides green space that is a better plan than this plan. If anyone was looking at that plan and said, you know, let me choose between that option and this option, I think it's a pretty easy choice. There are a series, I don't know how to say it anymore emphatically, an unbelievably large number of misconceptions that are kind of floating around on social media. So let me just try to tackle a number of them, and then I will be finished. First, wetlands. We have a letter from the Corps of Engineers that designates this site as non-jurisdictional wetland, which means that we have the ability to fill it and pipe it and drain it accordingly. That is indisputable. Parking. Our PD does allow for us to utilize our parking lot to the west, so we are not in violation of our PD. This project, as I mentioned, will take cars off the road. The vast majority of residents of this facility will not have cars. The whole point of building the facility here is to be adjacent to our shuttle stop and our wardrobe building to facilitate that access for our team members. Stormwater. A number of, by curbs and a catch basin all the way around the property to handle the existing stormwater from the balance of the development. And the drainage ditch, as I mentioned, is an oversized, the piping that we're putting in is oversized and is going to help to take care of the stormwater that is from our site. We're really only talking about the rainwater that happens from our site onto our particular site because the catch basins in the storm drain system on that parcel already handle the rest of the water. And contrary to what Ms. Fraser said, we are funding 100% of the cost of that, and we are seeking no government subsidy, we are seeking no funds whatsoever. It is 100% funded by Sea Island Company. Precedent. This word's been mentioned the most. The existing PD text is 45 feet high, so the precedent issue is not a discussion around 45 feet. This is a unique case involving workforce housing that also happens to be adjacent to other support assets, and it provides and preserves green space. This is a project that will take cars off the road. All of those are unique circumstances that don't require anyone on the Island Planning Commission or the County Commission to consider this a precedent for any other type of development that goes on on St. Simon's Island, unless perhaps it's a workforce housing development that has all of their access right next to it and provides green space in the same way that we do, in which case, I would say you would have a hard time not voting for that from a precedent perspective. Bad community steward. That was on one of the websites that's there. I'm not sure why anybody in this community who's been here for more than 20 minutes thinks that. Since our inception, Sea Island Company has been probably the most, one of the most, if not the most generous and philanthropic company to this community. The majority of the land and churches on St. Simon's Island sit on land donated by the company. Over the last 10 years, Sea Island Company, through our foundation or through foundations that are owned by our ownership, have funded over $10 million to nonprofit organizations in our local community. We work with Second Harvest and the Anshicks Foundation to provide 10,000 meals a year to kids in all 18 schools in Glen County. We've got a volunteer army of team members who work with local organizations, serve on their boards, and participate in their activities. We're the largest corporate contributor.
I'm sorry, but your time and Mr. McHugh's time is up unless someone else wants to.
Yes. I've got about two minutes left.
Yates Anderson with Sea Island. I yield my time to Scott Styland.
And give me your name again.
Mr. Yates Anderson with Sea Island.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So.
Before you start again, Mr. Styland, we're going to please, Mr. McHugh yielded his time, Mr. Styland had his time, the same amount of time that each of you. his time, Mr. Stalin had his time, the same amount of time that each of you had, and I would appreciate you respecting the time that he's been given. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Stalin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're the largest corporate contributor to the land trust. The company donated the Stables Track that is right at the corner of Frederica and Sea Island Road. That's an example of what's happened. And some years ago, our existing owner purchased all of the remaining developable land around Frederica Township, and voluntarily downzoned that by four hundred-plus units to protect the expansion of rooftops on this island. This is something that he understands, and he understands and cares about, and I'm not aware of anybody making that kind of a voluntary downzoning in, in our history. The last thing I want to touch on is the thing that's people we're going to employ and the quote-unquote foreigners who are going to be coming in to live in this facility. Frankly, those comments are both upsetting and offensive to me. This facility isn't going to be just international team members. It is only going to be three hundred and nineteen beds, and it's not six hundred-plus people, and we are not putting in bunk beds or tripling up rooms as has been laid out. Sea Island operates at a five-star level. We execute at a five-star level on the basis of this team and why this team does it. This team is gracious, they're heartfelt, they're dedicated, they're committed, and they're proud of working for this company. Our international team members are part of our Sea Island family. They are the heart and soul. These folks are not just randomly selected to try to come to work in the United States. They go through a process in their own country, they're vetted there, they're vetted on their way in. These are folks that are seeking opportunity. The majority of our, of our international workers are student-age people who are looking to make a difference and make an impact. The other balance of our, of our foreign workers are people that are sacrificing for their families, coming to Sea Island, coming to the United States to work for months at a time to be away from their families because they can earn more than what they can do at home. They are professionals, and I love them, and I will stand by them every single time. The xenophobic insinuations that are going on in here, to me, are both a sad commentary and a poor reflection of our community, and I will continue to apologize to my team for the behavior and comments of those folks. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of ZM 5558? Please state your name for the record, please, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Mark Cock. I'm the headmaster at St. Simon's Christian School. I'm here to speak on behalf of our school in regards to the Sea Island Workforce Housing Development Project that is directly across the street from our campus. Our students, staff, and campus are our top priority. As such, we are monitoring this project very closely. While we have enjoyed the extra privacy allowed by the wooded space for many years, we understand that the current zoning and site plan approval gives the developer the right to develop this project. While this space, or I'm sorry, while this type of project presents challenges next to a school campus, we can say that the developer has and is continuing to work with us in good faith to be a good neighbor on Kokina Circle as they develop this project. They have met with us in person and other modes of communication multiple times to hear our concerns, address them, and offer to do things that they did not have to do to be a good neighbor. We have confidence that they will continue to work with us to minimize the impact of construction and the future project on our campus and our students. As for what they are seeking tonight, the approved site plan was approved in January, is for a four-story building that is forty-five feet high, both of which are already allowed under the current PD text. When they sought rezoning for the clarification of four habitable floors versus three, our attorney at that meeting stated that, at that meeting, that we preferred three habitable floors for less density on the site. But Sea Island has since shared with us and presented here tonight that if they do not get approval for four habitable floors, they will seek the same density by building additional buildings. These additional buildings would be closer to our school and allow for less buffer, both in physical distance, landscape. Preferred no development of this site. If the site has to be developed, we prefer the four habitable floor option of the building depicted in the approved site plan because of the option Sea Island is proposing, we believe it is the better, in the better interest of the school. Thank you for considering our unique perspective in this matter as neighbors to this project, and we appreciate everything you do as commissioners. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else to speak in favor of ZM 5558? Please come forward, state your name for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Davis. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm a mother of two grade-school children at St. Simon's Christian School. I'm also a former employee of Sea Island and also a member. I wanted to share my personal experiences with Sea Island, the staff, team members. For over a decade, I've enjoyed the amenities. We've had countless interactions with the team through these years. Our older girls have grown up attending these events, and the twins and I visit the pools frequently. In fact, in August, I just had a class party for the entire fifth grade at the retreat pool. They had a blast. Through the years, my family has participated and enjoyed various Sea Island events, such as the Rain Dog Parade, friends' weddings, we even had our own there, and the children have attended day camps, concerts, cookouts, visits on Santa's lap, golf tournaments, boating excursions, and we've even attended church on property. At each encounter, we've always had a wonderful experience with Sea Island's employees, and I'm fortunate to call many of them our friends. These individuals have been in charge of our children's safety, well-being, and have created some of their most fond childhood memories. They supervise them when swimming and shooting, sailing, playing sports, and they transport them. I trust them emphatically with our children and have zero reservations about them being next door to our school. Each employee has provided me with a sense of comfort and trust. I've heard some of the gossip and slander about these individuals that is running rampant in our community. I would hope that we're not being judgmental or racially profiling these individuals. Sea Island has led the charge on showing international hospitality through the years. I think we're all very proud to say that our community hosted the GA Summit back in 2004. As a business owner myself, I can sympathize with the struggle of any company to not only obtain but retain key employees. As the saying goes, everyone and their brother. Well, literally, myself and my brother have both employed past Sea Island employees and have, had had amazing experiences with these well-trained professionals. Even our current security officer at St. Simon's Christian School, Officer Ritchie, is a previous Sea Island member. I think it's safe to say that the vast majority of us have had close encounters with Sea Island and their employees. The overwhelming consensus is that this, we trust this company. They've always done a tremendous job with giving back to our community and improving it. Not only are they the largest private employer in the county, but they're especially charitable and active community stewards. They don't just donate money, y'all. They also, like St. Simon's Christian, strive to serve. They come alongside local organizations like The Gathering Place by developing workforce programs, and Save by Grace where they help homeless get back on their feet by offering employment. They've even assisted them with housing. A special place. Since 1928, they've done a fantastic job of recruiting, screening, and hiring top-notch employees, thus, that's why they have that five-star rating. My family and children depend on and embrace these individuals, like Mr. George at the Beach Club, Gerald and Scott at the Lodge, Phil, Lee, and Zach down at Broadfield, who attended our wedding and we have attended some of theirs, AJ, who's always at the cloister door with a smile on his face, and Anisha, who's working poolside. Every day, and every one of these employees have been selected and screened and makes Sea Island and this community so special and so dear to us. This is why I support this, and I welcome them as a neighbor at St. Simon's Christian. Thank you.
My name is Ralph Staffens. I am a resident of St. Simon's, and I think this is my first time coming to you all for a personal reason. I'm a dad. I'm a parent of four wonderful kids, three of which are at this school that is going to be a neighbor to this property. And next year, when the project's complete, I will be a father of four children at this school. And I can tell you, me and my wife have complete confidence that the proposed site plan is a much better use and neighbor to our school. It provides a wall, it provides grown trees and site distance protection for our school. We talked to our law enforcement professional at the school, and he thinks that the proposed site plan is the preferred one compared to the one you see on the screen now. And now, I'm no infrastructure expert, I am no drainage expert or wetland expert, but I do know a thing or two about workforce. And our community needs workforce housing. Our community needs, every business in our community needs more workers to be able to go to work in their businesses and create great products and great services, and Sea Island is no different. And so I support this project the way it's proposed as a dad to four kids at that school.
Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. I'm Jim Sanders, and thank you to the Board of Commissioners for hearing us tonight. I'm a St. Simon's resident. I live in Seapalm, and I'm here tonight, I'm also a Sea Island club member, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of something that upset me that, that's been touched on a little bit, but it's the, about the team members. And I just want to say wholeheartedly that I have been so impressed. I spent thirty-five years in the, supporting the hospitality industry before I retired to St. Simon's. My wife is still in the hospitality industry, so she couldn't be with us tonight. But I've been impressed from day one, thirteen years ago, when I stepped on that campus, of what they refer to as gracious hospitality. And it's been touched on here a little bit, but to get to that, there's an awful lot of screening that goes on. But above and beyond the screening is skill teaching, and more importantly, is management and development of these ten, team members. It's like nothing you've ever seen in the hospitality industry. And, and the example that I use, my wife and I use all the time, is it's equivalent to the difference when you go to a Chick-fil-A versus some of the other QSRs up and down the road. It's something different in these people, and, and as mentioned before, these are trustworthy people. And I can't tell you how many interactions I've had that have become true friendships. There's Michael, who was here from the Dominican Republic. We took him to St. Williams Catholic with us because he was looking for a place to go to church. A international exchange program for supporting resorts. There's Jamal, who I met at the golf course. He works in maintenance at the golf course. He's striving to learn a skill so he can go back to Jamaica and start his own lawn service and landscaping service in Jamaica. And lastly, the one that's probably, you know, closest to me is one of the leaders in culinary, who's from France. He's become my best golfing partner. And so I will just tell you that these people, these team members, could not be more representative of what the company refers to as gracious hospitality. And, and I would love to have them in my community next to me, and I would encourage the board tonight to please accept this team member housing. And before I stop, I do, I do want to just recognize and, and, you know, think that we can have a civil discussion like this. Yes, there's, there's multiple sides to every story, and so I appreciate this ability that we've shown each other to listen. And, and I want to thank the Sea Island Company. I think it's been mentioned a couple times before, they're a great corporate citizen to Glen County, ninety-five years. It's not easy. I worked in the industry for thirty-five years. It is not easy to get to Forbes Five Star. They've had it an unprecedented fourteen years in a row. It's super hard to do. And then lastly, I want to thank you, the Commissioners. Cap, you and I have had our exchanges, usually it's about traffic, so anything that takes traffic off the roads, I'm, I'm all for, but thank you for your leadership and for what you do. I know the decisions you make are hard, but I would strongly encourage you to approve this. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of ZM 5558? Please come forward and state your name. I think we have time for one more. Anyone else to speak in favor? All right, seeing none and hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we're back to you. First of all, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight, and I want to thank you for those that voted for me, for giving me the privilege to serve this county, but specifically as Commissioner for St. Simon's. And when you're in that position at St. Simon's, it's like my family. I have a large family. You've got my brother on the left and my brother on the right, and they're each unique in their careers, desires, and goals, but I always have to remind myself that we're Of course, this is my third term as Commissioner, and besides roads, water, and sewer and parks, the number-one thing that I fought in my previous commission and in this is my concerns over density. That will always be consistent for me. Since my family has been here for a long time, I had the privilege to grow up, I've seen the island change more than anybody. But in defense to my brother, Sea Island, who's been a part of this community most benevolently since 1926, and I've grown up with them, the previous owners and the current owners, they've gone out of their way every time to do the right things to gift this community, and I appreciate that, and I want to tell them thank you. On the other side, I serve a community of people that have moved here. They came here because they love it. Like on the East Coast, equality of life, but that's why I came back, because the crush of density is a battle that will always be fought on St. Simon's. Back in the eighties, Reagan passed an investment tax opportunity plan where you could develop and basically write off your development even in one year if you wanted. And that pulled the trigger on the boom on St. Simon's back in 1982. And we're still reeling from that with the addition of short-term rentals. But density is still an issue in our lands, in our roads, in our utility. utilities. And so, for this reason, I won't be voting for this, because I have fought this battle with density in my first two terms and even now, because there's always somebody coming to St. Simons that has money more than the guy before, who's going to seize opportunity and do good or bad, but they're going to seize on the opportunity. And the pressure of density is always there. But to assail Sea Island, like the huge amount of emails posted on Facebook is incredible, because they've been nothing but good stewards. Now, the thing that you have seen tonight is that they have options if we turn this down. And even though I'm not voting for it, I think they've done immeasurable jobs. Some of the real concerns that I've been, which have been addressed by staff and Mr. Stylen at Sea Island, are things like fire protection. You've got a 45-foot building. How are we going to rescue people? Because the only 45-foot ladder we have is down at St. Simons Airport, which when I was Commissioner last time, we got because of the onslaught of condominiums in high-rises on the south end. That battle went back and forth, by the way. It went to four habitable floors, and I was fortunately able to reconvince a new commission to go back to three. And that's been pretty much upheld. So, this company has been disparaged in many ways, which they're not worthy of. They're like every business, trying to deal with today's climate and labor supply. I experienced those same issues in my business. That doesn't mean that I'm still going to approve this project. I looked at, also, they operate another facility, and I had the police do all the background and record checks, incidents reports, and really, no issue that different alarming than any other neighborhood on St. Simons. So, the talk of foreigners or the threat to children, well, that's a reasonable concern that needs to be vetted. Who's coming? What their records will be? What's the past management? But Sea Island has impeccably managed their staff and their facilities. So, all of these things I went through, of course, one of the great social media hurls, which was totally untrue and full of lies, and all of you that participated in that, I'm ashamed of you, because a lot of this was about water runoff, storm runoff. Sea Island did get their permits. I made sure that staff confirmed it. I even confirmed it myself. And people wanted to throw out there that it was. They didn't care for the truth. I took their comments to verify what the truth was. And it was untrue to say that they were violating the law. For my residents, I have concern for where this goes. As you know, I told you I would serve one term and give it all my best for roads, water, sewer, parks, and density. So, my greatest respects are to Sea Island and to my constituents. And I'm glad that Sea Island is the company we have to deal with. But anyway, that's how I feel about the situation as the District Commissioner for St. Simons. So, I will be voting no, because I know from serving two terms and now, the increase of density will always be the push on St. Simons. And whether we control it with our traffic, our water, our sewer, and our development, will depend what the future of this island will be like for all of us. Thanks.
What I'd like to add to that is, the 45 feet is not an issue. The 45 feet, there's houses on St. Simons that are 45 feet tall. I think the condition that we were looked at back earlier in the year when we were putting the limit to that was the attic space, which would have been the fourth floor. And it was trying to take it all the way down to the bottom floor where there was inadequate parking to enable them to have that many bedrooms. Anyway, that was the 45 limit, and we are with the 45 limit. So, that's not an issue as far as I'm concerned. What I do have questions and concerns about is the drainage and taxpayer impact on that. So, I want to ask a question, and I hope there's someone that can answer this question for me, as to, does Glen County taxpayers have any tax involvement in this project? And I see someone coming up to the podium now, but hopefully you can answer that question, because I want to know who's paying for this? Is Glen County involved in this in any way with taxpayer dollars?
Good evening, sir. Jason Hartman, Engineering Director and County Engineer. No, Glen County has no funding. Mr. Stylen was correct in what he was saying. This particular Coquina Circle project is funded by Sea Island. The limits of the project is what we're seeing here. We do have a larger project that is part of some ARPA funds and county project, but that project is not far along enough to make any comments on unless you have specific questions for me.
So, some of the accusations that were listed here tonight are false, that we would have in taxpayer dollars involved in this?
They are false, sir. This is a project that's went through Sea Island as the owner, Robert Civil Engineering as the engineer, and this has went through any other process we would go through, through our development review team meetings that we have on any development on the mainland or the island. And we're not quite through the process, but this is where we're at in the process. And this particular issue is for the building what has been presented tonight.
So, is Glen County Engineering and our part of this project, is it accepted to what Robert's Engineering has done and what we have approved for them?
Yes, to a degree. However, the thing that's being most misquoted is, this is a site plan for, we have to go through our process. What's not been mentioned is construction plans, and we're not in that phase yet. So, we need to know this building height, not the height, but the layout of these buildings in order to fully look at our drainage. This engineer is going to be held to the same standard for water quality and quantity that we hold any engineer to, and we-
Option B versus option A, does the drainage effect, is it greater or worse with A or B? Or can you answer that question?
Well, obviously, you can put anything on a site here, but you're going to have to address to our standards when you're leaving the site. The important spot is where this drainage leaves the site, which is, Stephanie, can we go back a slide to the other site that showed like the housing development plan? Keep going back. Right there, you can see those double pipes there that are highlighted at the left of the screen there that goes near the parking lot? That is what we're concerned with, with an outfall condition. So, any developer is held to a pre and post condition of what's there previously and what they're going to go in there in the future. And it is up to them to meet our standards as a county, as a state, and, you know, ultimately, that's how we regulate things in reviews, so.
I see. Okay. Well, thank you for answering that, clearing that up for me.
Yes, sir.
Let me ask a question, Jace and Dee. What about the cemetery that was mentioned?
I recognize that question. I have one of my engineers here with me in the crowd. We are not aware of a cemetery that's in the vicinity, but as I just stated in my last response to Mr. Tosterson, we are concerned about this particular tract that's circular, Coquina Circle, and what's being developed on this tract, and how the stormwater is leaving this tract. If that cemetery is part of our bigger project, we will address that. But we are only responsible for this particular tract right now for this development.
So, is there anybody that is aware of a cemetery in the area? From Sea Island or the staff?
Not on this tract here, there's no cemetery. But like I said, I'm working with our other engineer that's contracted for the bigger project, and I'm not aware of any cemetery as well. But that's something we'll go through the process with if that's an issue, but that has not been brought up to me through our design process at this point in time.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I guess my final comments, as I was approached by some about this project, and then when I went to the website, it did bother me how it seemed to be portraying these folk, that many of them look like me. So, let's just be honest about this. And that really deeply bothered me, especially because of the person I was talking to. I know that that's not something that they are worried about, but it seems like the vast majority of folk who are concerned about this is. And my only concern now, because I think all of the technical questions are answered by the fellow Commissioners and the staff around this project. Why are people so opposed to this? Is it really because they are frightened that these folk pose a danger to children in the school, and yet we have the headmaster? From his statements, I don't think he believes that. So, I really don't understand it, other than, you know, folk feel how they feel, and I can receive that. But I have to make a decision about how I vote. And a lot of the team members are from my district. And I wonder, what if something happens and somebody makes a mistake? They should, but if they commit a crime, will everybody be seen as thieves and bad people? And we know that there are no perfect folk or people in the world. And so, I'm just surprised by this because of some of the people I know and talk to on St. Simons, that that seems to be the tip of the spear, this fear of these folk. And yet, they serve you.
No. We will reclaim, no.
Let me finish my comments, please, because I'm just telling you from the information that I received. And when you're talking about density and all these other things, again, I believe the technical questions have been answered. So, what is left? So, I'll finish, Mr. Chairman. I just don't get it. I really am disappointed by, I think, the presentation to justify being against this. And if somebody does something that is one of these workers or another team member of Sea Island, I just hope people don't judge everybody by one person's mistake. Thank you.
Commissioners?
Yes. So, my comment I would like to add is, I understand density is a big concern on the island. However, I see this as a unique situation. One of the adverse aspects usually with density is additional cars on the road. This is a big mitigating factor in this application. I see that this reduces the amount of automobiles on the road, and the pressure from that on the roadways at St. Simons Island. So, I just wanted to introduce that to the conversation.
Mr. Chairman, Jason, he doesn't sit down. I have a question. Let's just call this one A, and then the other one B. As far as drainage goes, if you've got more green space, it helps with drainage, correct, versus less?
Yes, sir. That's correct. To elaborate, you know, we've had innovative measures through where I'm from, if you can make pavement that drains, it's considered grass at some point. So, yes, the goal was to try to do as much green space as possible for a site. That would be the approach.
Okay. And the closest neighbor to this is the school, correct?
Yes, sir. Probably the only neighbor it seems.
Yeah, that's what I thought. All right. That's all I got right there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, any other comments? Are we ready to entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ZM 5558 as presented.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Swett. Any other conversation, any other? All right. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is six for, those against, one against. This passes six to one. Thank you. And if any of you would like to leave before we go to our next item, we'll give you a minute or two. We got another? All right. Item number 14 tonight, it's under general business to consider adopting the 2023 Glen County Comprehensive Plan. And Mr. Harris, how are you this evening?
Good evening, Commissioners. Toby Harris, Community Development Manager, Director. Commissioners, you have been presented with a proposal for the 2023 Glen County Comprehensive Plan for you to consider for adoption. During the required public comment time made available, Glen County received one supplemental. After considering the comments presented, some changes have been made that the staff believes satisfies the Glen County Comprehensive Plan to a level of adoption by the Glen County Board of Commission. Does the Commission have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I've got one. I had a question posed to me. By passantess, does it make any current neighborhoods noncompliant?
At this time, I would like to ask that Ms. Leaf and Mr. Postle- Um, at this time, I would like to ask that Ms. Leaf and Mr. Postle be available for questioning. I believe they could, I, I could answer that, they have a better technical aspect of that. And also, we have with us Mr. Aaron Carpenter from CRC that can uh, elaborate as well. Ms. Leaf, Mr. Postle.
Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager, um, to that question, so the Comprehensive Plan is a guiding document, it is not a regulatory document. So um, in terms of making anything non-conforming, um, that non-conforming provision really is only in the zoning ordinance. So if we were to change a zoning ordinance and, you know, for example, you know, say someone's living in a home that's zoned highway commercial, but they've lived there for seventy years. If we change that, um, you know, if we change that zoning, or, or if that home became, say, a retail shop. Uh, they would not be able to go back to being a single-family home because they did change the use of it and they lost their non-conforming status. Um, so that provision really does not exist in the Comprehensive Plan because it is guiding, not a regulatory um, legal document in that sense, that helps.
Uh, would you come up and, and give the CRC's uh, position on that, please?
Certainly, I mean, Stephanie pretty, pretty much covered it, so the only thing in there that remotely has anything to do with zoning is the future land use map. But again, that's for future uses and would not make any property non-conforming that exists today.
And what about commercial properties that uh, under our, we're, we're using character maps in this Comprehensive Plan instead of the future land use map? Did it change the status of any existing businesses?
No, it would not.
And it would not stand, uh, change the status of any existing neighborhood?
No, it does not.
For future sales or, you know, as far as title work goes or anything, uh, if, if the existing owner chooses to sell the property down the road, it would not encumber his title in any way?
No, it would not.
I think I asked that correctly.
Okay.
All right. Well, any other, any other questions, comments?
Yeah, um, Mr. Chairman, so we have, Stephanie has a kind of a list or breakdown of the changes that were made based on the comment period. And so she's prepared to, to walk through those now, most of them are in nature, but um, would you like to see those now or?
No, let's see them now.
Okay, thank you.
So uh, with the Comprehensive Plan, there was a forty-day public comment period and there was uh, one set of comments that was received uh, from a citizen during this forty-day comment period. Um, so staff has gone through those comments, um, worked with the CRC staff as well. And uh, there were some changes that were already made to the Comprehensive Plan uh, that are shown in the draft that is available to the public on the website, that was part of your packet. Um, there were some changes um, that uh, we made this week that are not in the packet, so we wanted to make sure we walk through those and have them in the record so you all can see them. Uh, these are all um, pretty minor changes, so uh, we don't feel that they are anything substantial. Um, but I'll just go through each section, so under section five point two for land use, uh, we did make a change um, to the first paragraph where we have a line that uh, that's, that starts with the county should require new development. Um, we, it was really just kind of a wordsmithing that we decided to delete that line um, just to make that paragraph a little more condensed, uh, because we felt that it was already kind of saying what we needed it to say here for land use. And then the last line in the first paragraph, um, just to make sure that the flow was kind of consistent, we um, just revised it saying, to say, "The public infrastructure expansion should be considered when in support of the construction of affordable workforce housing." So we just uh, removed kind of the, the start of that line. Under section five point two point one, um, it's a new approach to land uses this section. Uh, under the very first bullet that reads, "There should be less reliance on grandfathering old structures and development patterns." Uh, we did um, remove this entire line. The second bullet, uh, that states, "Continue to preserve green space in other conservation areas," we added the words "where possible" at the end of that line. Under section five point two point three, which is resource preservation, uh, we did have a few changes here and these were um, a lot of these, again, were just, you know, kind of minor, more just wordsmithing changes. Uh, but the first bullet, uh, to revise, we revise the sentence to state, "Ensure the historic African-American community in Harrington and other similar cultural resources are not threatened by future development." Um, the second bullet, um, regarding impervious surfaces, I mean, this is something we are looking at in the zoning update already. Um, so we didn't feel that it needed to be um, particularly in this, in this section here. The second bullet's remove entire line. Uh, third bullet about uh, the Glen County should seek to minimize development within its flood plains. We um, we already uh, look at, we already have regulations for flood plains, so we changed it to Glen County should continue to regulate development in the flood plain. Uh, fifth bullet, uh, and actually that should read um, continue to regulate developments, the word "in" should probably be removed from that, development in the flood plain. Uh, the fifth bullet um, is uh, we opted to delete, delete that, so we do have um, another statement that's similar to that. Uh, the sixth bullet, um, regarding tree canopy, we are adding the words "where possible" to the end of this line. Section five point three point two, appropriate residential development on St. Simon's Island. So the fourth bullet, uh, this is uh, regarding reduction in density, we add the words "should be cons..." It, uh, we opted to remove this entire line, just the wording of it, um, just to make sure, we, there's different things we are looking at in terms of density. Um, but we just opted to remove this line, just um, for clarity of it. And then section five point four, um, natural, historic and cultural resources. Uh, for the first paragraph, last line, revise, uh, Glen County should consider developing a long-term strategy, so just adding in the word "should consider." And section five point four point one, under resource protection, second bullet revised to continue regulating tree canopy. Third bullet revised it, the county should consider adopting rec, regulations in West Glen County. And again, that's just adding in, um, the word "should consider" to that line. Uh, and then the ninth bullet revised to consider working with partners, so really adding in the word "consider working." Um, just, again, that's wordsmithing. And then the last bullet is um, add the words "where possible" at the end of this line. And that is the extent of our changes, are there any questions at this point on those?
Commissioners, any comments? All right, uh, we are here to consider adopting the 2023 Glen County Comprehensive Plan, uh, I can entertain a motion at this point.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, uh, uh, Mr. Carpenter from CRC does have kind of an overview of the process and some next steps, if you'd like him to go through any of those, just a few slides on that.
What, you don't, you don't want to come up? But I, we'll be happy to, to do that.
All right.
So.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, well, I will be brief, um, but as you can see, we are at the end of this timeline, that started in, in January. Um, and tonight, we are at the last step, uh, which is to adopt the Comprehensive Plan. And as soon as we receive the adopts and resolution, we transmit that to DCA and you should receive a QLG extension letter in about a week. Um, this slide is just to show you that we, we met all the qualifications, it is really small and you probably cannot read that. Uh, but essentially, it walks through all the things that we have done up to this point, from updating your vision and goals. Uh, we did add a coastal resilience, we added a housing, and we also added a broadband section to meet the new state requirements. Uh, we updated your community work program and had all the public hearing requirements. Uh, we have been over that before, but we did have five stakeholder meetings. Uh, we had three public listening sessions, we received nine hundred and fifty public survey responses, and we just completed on September twenty-sixth, that ended the forty-day review uh, for the plan that you will be uh, voting on tonight. I wanted to touch on briefly what, you know, where do you go from here? Uh, you're required to up this, date, update this plan every five years, um, but not to leave it on a shelf until the next five years comes around. Uh, this thing is to be implemented to the best of the county's ability and you do so by using the tools available to you from, you know, departmental work programs to other plans like the transportation plan. But also uh, the zoning regulations and other capital investments and, and, and things like that. I also wanted to mention briefly, uh, thank you to everyone that participated, thank you to the Board of Commissioners, to those of you who served on the Stakeholder Committee. Uh, those were long two-to-three hour meetings and, and five of them at that, uh, so we do appreciate all the participation and also all of the citizens that did either email comments or review the plan or completed the survey. Uh, Glen County up to this point, I've been here for three years, we by far had the most public participation than I've had in other, any other community. Um, so that is uh, kudos to you all. And yeah, I've already uh, mentioned the next steps, tonight you're going to vote on whether or not to adopt the plan. After the Coastal Regional Commissions receives a copy, we'll transmit that to DCA and that will end this process until you decide to amend it or five years from now. Are there any questions for me?
Yes, so we can amend this at any time.
You, yes, you may. Hmm?
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank everybody that put all the work together, especially the amount of time that y'all put on it specifically and uh, thank you. It was very interesting that the recommendations for St. Simon's were everything we talked about tonight, so I think the target's right on, as far as my district.
Mr. Muff?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the draft you have attached to your agenda online does not include the updates as presented by Ms. Leaf. So to the extent you make a motion tonight to adopt, I would suggest you make it with the updates as presented by staff.
All right. Are we ready to entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the resolution to adopt the 2023 Comprehensive Plan with the revision staff has made.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Rofolski, a second by Commissioner Booker, any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is six for, and uh, Mr. Tosterson had to step away. All right. That brings us to our public comment period and we have tonight, Mr. Julian Smith. Please come forward, state your name again for the record, please, sir, and you'll have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I hope this is turned off. I'm Julian Smith, I live on St. Simon's Island. Uh, I'm here to speak to you tonight about the public comment period, which we're having right now. As you know, I have objected and will continue to object.
Mr. Smith, one, one second, I believe your other device. I believe your other device is still on, we're getting a, a squill.
Yes, would you, thank, thank you.
And, and now, please.
Uh, I will continue to object to your having moved the public comment period from the start of the meeting until the end, when it's almost impossible for members of the public to come to you and say, "You have something on your agenda tonight that you should uh, take off of, say, the consent agenda and actually discuss it." Um, I find it very ironic that you had been considering hiring a lobbyist to help you and the Chamber of Commerce, et cetera, get to people in Atlanta. Uh, and yet, you don't want to be lobbied by citizens, uh, even citizens who are knowledgeable about the kinds of things you are doing or should be doing or should not be doing. And I find it very interesting that the very last thing that you heard about was a Comprehensive Plan. When several weeks ago, uh, there was a classified ad in the Brunswick News saying, "You would be having a public hearing tonight on the Comprehensive Plan." And then a few days later, we get another ad saying that this public hearing has been canceled. Because you've already had enough opportunities for the public to s, speak about the Comprehensive Plan. But they have not had opportunities to speak to you in public. Yes, there are all kinds of uh, hearings and opportunities for the public to speak and very few did. Um, because the members of the public have grown used to, you're not really wanting to hear from them. Uh, but I grow tedious and I'm tired and this. Give the public legitimate, realistic, honest efforts to speak to you. Most of the people who came to here tonight to speak to you about the Sea Island matter did not speak. They don't know how to speak, they're afraid to speak. Uh, and you really need to give the public chances to speak to you. Even if that means getting rid of the public comment period policy that says only three people can speak any night and only, and, and no person can speak more than four times a year. Uh, that's such a, an obvious sign that you don't, you're not interested in what the public has to say. So with that, I say to you, good night and good luck.
Our second speaker for tonight, um, canceled his public speaking, uh, public comment period and uh, spoke during the hearing period. So we have no other speakers for tonight and that will conclude our regular agenda. Uh, we do have calls for executive session for land use and personnel.
Mr. Chairman, motion to go into executive session for personnel and?
Land use.
Land use.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofolski, a second by Commissioner Fendick to go into executive session, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous, we stand reassessed. We stand reassessed.[426.77]
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofolski, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve
the minutes of executive session. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the county manager to offer up to 20% over the entry level grade of 28 for a public safety PIO.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofolski, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve the 20% over the 28 pay grade for a public safety PIO. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Before we adjourn, let me make mention that Commissioner Clark had to leave, so these votes after the executive session are 6-0 votes, not 7-0. Any other business to come before the commission tonight?
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofolski, a second by Commissioner Booker to adjourn. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you.